Welcome to the planning board meeting and I will encourage you to sign up the sheet back over there for assistance. Please do before leaving the room. We're going to start our meeting. We did pledge to the allegiance, so I'm going to have you stand up, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jill is the agenda. You sent me the current one?
Yes.
Same as this?
The one I sent today.
Okay, thank you. So after the pledge of allegiance, we're going to have the A and R. Michael, Mealy, 18 and 50, Dean Street, map 15, lots 7 and 10. Are you here today?
What's this over here?
Yeah.
So basically all we're doing is we own 18 and then the land and we own 50. So we're giving 18 the minimum requirement for a two-family. We're giving 50, taking some land from the Bacon Marcell. Giving it to 50 so we can try and build a permanent, turn that into a four-family. And then the rest is just a little bit of land to do with.
Who is this? I couldn't find him on the map.
Team parks right at the end, right here, down this crosswalk, cross from the big warehouse on the river.
So that little, that one, this big one, you're giving it to that one?
No, this one belonged to 18.
Okay.
So we're shrinking 18 to give it a minimum requirement for a two-family, which is, and then we're giving this little piece to the land.
To the land?
Yep.
Okay.
And then this one was right here, and we're taking a little bit from the big land and adding it to that.
To make it bigger for the...
To make it bigger so we have the square footage, that's pretty...
Any comments?
No.
You got the proper amount of frontage and acreage, right?
Yep. You know, any requirements?
I think it looks okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R for, how do you say it, Michael?
Mealy.
Mealy?
Yep.
Yeah, hold on. So you're giving this to that?
Nope, we're taking this and adding this. Right now, this is a three-family, so we have the minimum requirements for that. We're adding more square footers so we can create a four-family.
You're adding that, right?
Taking that away and adding it to the land.
Oh, yeah?
Yep. Yeah, I think the western... This is only a two-family, so this is, I think, let's say 75 feet of frontage.
It's not there?
So you only got, what is it, 91 feet?
Yep.
Of frontage?
Yep.
Pass me one of the copies, sir. Pass me one of the copies. David, thank you. So 91 is the minimum for a two-family?
75. It says on the side, okay.
Yeah, it says on the side.
Well, you said you shrink this to the minimums, all right.
Uh, no, not the minimum, but...
In area?
Have to go to 91 feet to get the square footage.
Yeah.
Yep.
Half an acre, almost. So this is losing this. This, nope, this is gaining this, this is losing this, and they are gaining this part.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, this could be improved, as I know, okay? It looks unfinished.
Yeah, so I'm homeowner and I don't know why they want to...
Well, I'll get a five if I do this. I do this all the time. You should, you know, immediately tell me, oh, that's over there. Over there, I'm like, where is that? Are you good, David? Checking?
The minimum frontage was more...
For a two-family?
Yeah.
Can you look up over there?
Because I know he's putting 75 feet.
Well, 75 feet for one home.
This is village or residential?
Village?
Village.
Check these setbacks, too. Maybe they are different from a single-family home.
Want me to put it up on the screen?
Yeah, that'd be good. I mean, we all learn here. It'll follow you if you talk. If you speak, it will follow your voice.
It is, sir.
It is, found it?
In the village, right?
In the village, for two-family?
Right there. So village, what was it, two and four family? Okay, two and four family, 75 feet, right here.
Is that row?
Yep.
Max height 40, 20, 15, you're good. Sometimes what I ask them to do is put that on the plan. So I just say, that's a copy of your bylaw right there, instead of rewriting it. And for the 40 was the same, right? It doesn't matter because he's going by area. You need the area to make, to the footprint, to make it...
Yeah.
A buildable for a family lot. Oh, that's good. I hope it goes.
That's excellent.
Yeah, it's easier over here. With the building inspectors, another story.
Yeah, right.
Sounds good. David, you good?
I'm good, yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R for Michael Mealy, 18 and 50, Dean Street, map 15, lot 7 and 10.
Do you have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
If you're okay, I...
If you're willing to give an "aye".
David, you for an "aye"?
Derek Welly's, "aye".
The Chi Hocker, "aye".
Motion passes. You're going to sign now, so he can leave and...
You're just taking the Mylar, or do you have a second copy?
There is, I believe, is one of the...
So is any Mylar?
I just need three of the regular, and if there's any extra, you can have it. And the Mylar, you take the Mylar. I counted four, four came in here, but I don't know.
Just get it over with.
Just make sure it's dated, too, please. 17. There's three here, right? These are the ones that I...
Okay, we need three, right?
Yep, those three are mine, yep. You want to take that, too? If you want to put it here, I'll just put them together.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, good luck.
Thanks.
Ed, could you announce the next?
Yeah, discussion with Kathleen Baines, map 13, lots 17 to 19, combine, combine with lot 18 for purposes of 61B.
Kathleen? Is she here, or who is...
Never met her, just talked to her on the phone.
On the phone, was she coming?
She asked for it to be put on the agenda, so I don't see it.
Is she on Zoom? Anybody?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Kathleen Baines, are you on Zoom?
Should we table it? Maybe she shows up?
No?
Yeah, we can just bump it down and...
So let's bump it down to the next one.
Want me to read this one?
Yes, please.
Okay. Public hearing on special permit number 310 and site plan approval number 68 for Cal Rolling Hills LLC under section 3.25.1 and section 8.4 of the Town of Warren zoning bylaws. The applicant is seeking a special permit to remove earth material from the property located at Gilbert Road, Warren. This parcel is also known as assesses map 5, lots 22 to 25, which is in the rural district.
All right. Got you here?
Sure. My name is Don Frederick Sherman, Frederick Lancer Bank Engineering. Just wanted to see where you would like to put my presentation board, is it on the table here, or you want it somewhere else?
Is it going to be visible? Maybe bring out a little...
I don't want to stand in front of you.
Well, if you put it there, so the public can hear and look at it, we can look at it. Most of us have been there in this site, so if that helps to give us a summary of what's cooking.
So again, Don Frederick, I'm Sherman, Frederick Lancer Bank Engineering, from Cal Rolling Hills. We have David Callahan, Janet Callahan, and Michael Shag, representing the applicant owner. So the application is for, as you read, for a special permit and site plan for earth removal on lot 22 through 25 Gilbert Road. This first sheet is kind of an overall view. Comes out of the street here, crossing up into this area through here. Previous permits had a 40-acre outlined area, and then a 7-acre operating area inside of that. What they're applying for is the next cell, which then allows a 7-acre cell of that first page, dash line around the outline. 40-acre overall area, and then this area here, through the 7-acre operating area that they hope to use during this permit session. We have submitted the required materials. Again, it's in the rural zoning district, which allows this for second plan approval and special permit. It's operated on a total of 700 acres by acreage owned by Cal Rolling Hills. Operating hours are listed in the application to match your operating hours for earth removal, with one exception, we had asked for using Saturday hours of 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., instead of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. No operation on Sunday and holidays, and Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There was one special condition allowed during previous special permits, which they'd also like to ask for, which was to allow the applicant under section 8.1611 for the storage of road grindings to be allowed within the 7-acre operating area. They use that to fix the access roads to the site if there are washouts and so forth during the operations. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant and the owners are here to answer any other questions you may have that I can't answer for this permit.
Is it, is it new application for the full permit?
Yes, it's a new application, yeah. The holiday all expired.
Everything's expired.
Everything was gone.
My understanding was it's a five-year permit. This is a new permit, because the other one has expired for five years and it's removable during...
Three-year, yeah. So the area here, this is the proposed operating area, squared area?
Yeah, so the squared area was the operating, was allowed a 40-acre operating area with a 7-acre active cell. So that's the 40 acres, and then the 7-acre cell, active is in that area.
And where was the previous work area on that map?
Right in through here. This is, the slopes are in this area right here, so it's been in through here. So you're working north of the town.
Yeah. This is the old? Were you allowed grindings in the old permit?
Yes. Yes, it was added as a special condition.
And the hours were in the old permit, or you're asking that?
Um, the hours essentially follow what's in your bylaw.
Yeah.
The only exception was the 7, the 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, instead of 8:00 to 10:00.
Yeah, this is just the application of the...
The request for that special condition for the grindings is in that cover letter, right in the bottom of the cover.
You want me to have that read that to record?
This is a letter we received from Ron and Nancy Roy. We are unable to attend the public hearings. We put our concerns about Cal Rolling Hills LLC's request for a special permit writing. The first concern we have is the use of trucks on Gilbert Road. In the past, there has been an increase of trucks utilizing the road when the gravel removal facility is operating. They've not always followed the requirements to use Smith Road. Gilbert Road is already in state of disrepair, and increasing truck traffic is a concern. The hourly operations need to be cleared, but Cal Rolling Hills LLC needs to be certain to follow the rules and regulations set forth in the permit if it is approved. In the past, there have been issues with the trucks and equipment being in operation early in the morning, starting before the allowed time. After some issues, we did initial blasts. We were to be given notice when blasting was to take place on the site. However, it is important that we receive fair notice prior to any blast. There have been times when we received a phone call with only an hour or so as notice. We would like to receive at least 24 hours' notice of any blasts. Thank you for your attention to our concerns.
Would he like a copy of it?
You can give them a copy, too.
Give her a copy?
Me, and if you're looking. You can give them a copy if they want one. Any response to the letter, or...
Would you rather us wait until all comments are made, or would you like to have us address it one by one as they're brought forward here?
I'd like to hear the letter.
Yeah, the comment.
Yeah, go ahead if you want to talk about the letter.
So a couple of things in there. Number one is the truck routes. I'm going to have David Callahan tell you the truck routes, because they have a specific truck route they use for the site.
So, with your permit, we were allowed for a period of time in the very beginning to be able to use Gilbert Road as we developed the access roads. Once the permit was initiated and we were in action, route is Smith Road. I'm very surprised to hear Mr. Roy, our neighbor, say that Gilbert Road is being overused because there is, where Mr. Roy lives, there's no way that the trucks can use Gilbert Road to get in and out of the property by Mr. Roy's house, because that goes down to the Quaybuck River, the metal bridge. Now, occasionally, there has been equipment, I believe, brought into Smith Road at the gate that might be a piece of, uh, equipment, but the daily truck traffic, or when the trucks are pulling out of and going back to the quarry, they only use Smith Road. Mr. Roy may be referencing an occasional low bed that would be pulling a bulldozer or a backhoe, and he may have come up Santos Road, but I don't think he would have. They'd come by your house with a piece of traffic.
Just as you're saying, it's always a flatbed with a big dozer on it.
Or something, but that is the limit. If any truck traffic is a piece of equipment on a flatbed, as other people use, but for the material that goes in and out of the facility, it's strictly Smith Road, and only Smith. If there, again, is there...
Mr. Callahan, just for a point of order.
Yes.
Sorry. When you're addressing, you have to address the board. You can't address individuals in the crowd and ask them questions. You're answering to the board, so...
She has a much better memory than I do. But that's my answer, thank you.
So you go south on Smith Road. I got the map up correct.
Okay, Smith Road and the Brimfield and Millbrook Road.
Turn into Sunlight, you can see the load better.
I don't know if they'd be hidden by now.
No, you can see them.
Yeah, they do actually come up, but they don't, isn't it? So this is Smith.
Yeah, Mr. Roy's property is back.
So where, yeah, where is Mr. Roy's property roughly?
Mr. Roy is right here, I believe.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we come out of quarry, go down this road.
Yeah.
Move up a little bit.
Then down, oh, sorry.
Or down, yeah. We come all the way out down here and go up Millbrook Road. Come all the way down through here into Brimfield, go underneath the bike, this is the Quaybuck River. Then we go up the Long Hill to Gilbert Road, we cross the bike, we go out Reed Street and down South Street. If we don't go down South Street, we go on Route 19, and we go, take Route 19 through Route 20 in Brimfield. I can assure you, it's not a regular practice for any material to leave that quarry and get out of Gilbert Road or Santos Road.
Okay.
That's the way we go.
So the other question in the letter was about the hours of operation. So again, what's in our application is following your bylaw, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. In your bylaw, it says Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We're asking for Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and no operation on Sundays and holidays.
So that would require a period, it's in the bylaw, the hours of operation in the bylaw. Your condition on that, right? We go, we're done for solar, so we go more straight, not less.
We'll stick with the bylaw, if not Saturday, it's even.
So it's okay for you to stay here?
Yeah.
Before, okay.
What about the blasting notice?
Just the back.
We're required to contact Public Safety Department. And that is our requirement. And then they, they've reached out. And we've worked hard to get a cadre, a list of people that we contact. We, we, we try, we give fair notice, day before or maybe multiple days before. And sometimes it's just, people are busy. And we're, we're not required per, per, per regulation. We contact Public Safety, which we do. And then, you know, sometimes people might get busy or. We work very hard to provide notice for anyone who wants it. There's people in Brimfield that we give notice to, there's people in Warren we give notice to. And we, we'll, we'll work very hard to make sure Mr. Roy and his wife get their, their notice as, as, as best as we can do it as per the regulation on how we are supposed to communicate.
Thank you. So that's the letter?
Yeah.
Okay, what about restoration of the site that you're closing?
Right now, it's a fine.
Define?
What?
Define.
Well, in the bylaw, it says you gotta return, so once you close an area, then you've gotta return it to where it was.
So right now, the non-active areas are covered with crushed oven. Make them stable. As this operation continues, they're going to be continuing north. Once that's done, they're going to be dropping back and moving another layer, so to speak, to come out. And then that, once that's done, then the entire area will be closed out. As it's closed out, they'll be removing the slopes so that it sort of daylights out to the existing graves to flatten it all out. Anything that is not daylighting out to graves will be swept off at a three-one slope and then covered with moment seed. I guess that was in the bylaw.
Right.
That's what the bylaw says.
Eight-six-three. So I just want to make sure that that's going to be done.
Yes.
Well, how much do you actually have open total then? Right now? Because you're only supposed to have seven acres or less. Anything else should be closed out.
But we're still not finished as I've, and, and as I, you know, David, I don't believe you were here the last time I was here, in December. The site is forty acres. We're going to be moving across and then going further down. It's not, we're not going to stop at this level. We're going to continue lower. But the idea, you have to, per, per practice, establish your floor across your acreage. And then the next cut will be that next, I think it's, Rich, I think it's a thirty-foot bench. We talked about this in the past.
Well, just that you don't want to have thirty feet without terracing.
And we are terracing.
Okay.
We are terracing. The, the next terrace goes down. And then the, there will be another terrace down over the years. So that, that is how, that's how you operate a quarry.
So you're saying the seven that you're finishing is at one level?
Yeah.
And the new seven acres is, is at a higher level and you're going to bring it down
To?
To the current one?
Correct.
And then you're going to go back to the old seven and start all over with another?
So here's our forty acres that we originally got.
Okay.
Here's where we've worked originally, establishing the floor.
Yeah.
That's the floor. We are now moving and we will continue to move across until we get to here. And then we will terrace in and go down again.
Okay.
I do want to make note that it's not forty acres and so this, this area through here and here is still. There is a cleared area through here where this current operation will be. So this is used as a stockpile area once they start processing the material. There's a stockpile here and out here and here. This is the seven acres that will be used as the active material. It's not the entirety of the forty acres that's open.
I think what the bylaw is trying to say is that within your forty acres, you have seven acres at a time. And every time that you move to another seven acres, this gets recovered.
So the bylaw specifically says in eight-point-six-point-six, the following restrictions apply to the operating area. Area not to exceed more than five to seven acres open at any time. Open working area not to exceed twenty-five percent of the entire site. Opening new area requires reclaimation of old area. And then reclaiming the area consists of four inches of loom and seeded before you can move to the next seven acres.
If I could, see if I can clarify a little. Let's just say this is the seven acres here. We're working back in this corner of the seven acres to complete the seven acres. The plan would be to come back here and get out twenty-five feet so we don't have greater than twenty-five foot bankings. So if we would loom and seed this whole area, the next time when we move back, we'd have to strip all the loom and the grass off again because we're going to be working in the same area, we're just lowering the floor at the location.
Because they're not done. But we're not done.
Right, but that's not what the bylaw allows.
And I understand the buzz. I, I truly do. I've been fortunate enough to be on multiple town committees establishing earth removal per bylaws. I did it with the town of Westbrookville. I did it with the town of Palmer. And the town of Palmer has a great bylaw. Town of Westbrookville has a great bylaw. Town of Warren has a great bylaw. All of these bylaws were designed for gravel pits. Gravel pits, for safety reasons, for safety, by Emsa regulation, cannot be anything less than a two-to-one slope. That is the natural repose of gravel. So if you go higher than a two-to-one slope, the chance for sloughing is the term, where the material will fall down and cascade over someone who may be working in that area is too great. So they ask for a two-to-one slope. Emsa, Emsa regulations, mine safety, health, similar ocean, occupancy, safety, health. What many towns do is they ask for more than that, like you said. And they ask for a three-to-one slope, which your bylaw does. And that is a safe slope for gravel. This is rock face. It will not slough. So when, when these bylaws have been made, quite often they're made with gravel in mind. This is a rock quarry. There's Emsa rules and regulations that we have to follow strictly. And they force us to do the terracing down. As the Mike Shay's point, we're going to go down again. You're not going to want to establish seeded lawn and then have to destroy it. And then rip it up and go down again. So I don't know if that helps you or doesn't help you, David, but.
No, I, I, believe me, I've been up there.
You've been up there.
You, you run an amazing operation and you are a reputable person within the community and it's not a question of that. It's just what our bylaw says. Because we have to stick by what the bylaw says because we enforce that equally across everybody. And when we start picking and choosing who we're going to enforce it for is an issue. So you're more of a mining operation versus a.
Earth, gravel operation.
Right.
I would agree with you if we were running a gravel operation.
You're, you're more of a mining operation, but we don't have mining.
Well, you do. You have an earth removal. It includes rock and.
Which is the bylaw to go mine. So.
I've got a little concern, Rich Demetrius, resident, still current Conservation Commission member. I've got a little concern over the bylaw's request to put four inches of loom on in this, in David's case. Because he's got a big open area of rock. You're going to put four inches of loom down. The grass isn't going to grow, but all it's going to do is wash out and cause an environmental hazard. So your bylaw is going to cause more problems than it's creating, than it's saving. From an environmental standpoint, you're going to have a lot of wash and that. So, I mean, I think it's something you should look at.
That's a good point.
I think we understand that. You know, it, it doesn't make sense in your operation, but that's what it says. So.
I think you need some common sense.
Do a kind of like a special permit or create a bylaw for just these operations?
Again, I think it would require a variance.
A variance, yeah. Yes?
Tracy Mazer, speaking on behalf of my father's estate, which affords the quarry the last, the previous permit. We had no issues with the operations of the quarry. I share some of the same concerns as the Roy. It's making sure that the materials and equipment go out Smith Road, that the notification occurs and we have gotten calls. And sometimes it's short notice, sometimes it's long, but we got an explanation tonight as to why that is, that it's from fire safety and people are busy. So we have received at my father's place calls saying that a blast was coming, so that was fine. Most of the big dozers and stuff would get moved on Gilbert Road and that was fine too. The drivers were very careful. The road itself has aged and is getting increasingly soft. So big equipment may end up getting stuck on Gilbert Road, so that's a concern. Plus, we've had a number of trees come down on Gilbert Road even recently and it's lined with that tree. So I think that there's a risk to using Gilbert Road even with the utmost care by the quarry. The location of my dad's house is above the quarry. So the equipment starting up early in the morning hasn't been a issue for us. But where the Roy's are located downhill, the way the quarry is, is like a hole. And that sound of the equipment does affect them more than it does my father's property. When the materials go down Smith Road to Brimfield and along the route that was spoken of, coming past the swamp on Brook Street, there's the law of unintended consequences, especially in June and July. These trucks are coming out about every ten minutes down that street and the turtles are just getting splattered down there. I was wondering if the town might be able to put an artificial sand berm near the swamp so that maybe we could reduce the numbers that would get struck. Because a lot of the turtles are big snapping turtles and they take twenty years before they can lay eggs. So it has a huge impact when one of those is run over. And it's not intentional. You cannot stop a big truck with a load of gravel in time to avoid a turtle. But I think it's got some environmental consequences down there. And the Turtle Rescue League of Sturbridge releases their turtles into that swamp. So it has a double win, so. Anyhow, I support the renewal of this permit under the conditions and concerns that have been mentioned.
Tracy, which one is that road that you're talking about from the turtles? So I believe this is Santos.
This would be Gilbert, right?
Yeah, this is really Gilbert. This is the metal, the metal bridge. And here's the site.
Yeah, and so they will come down to Brimfield, come up past the swamp.
So they come down here, of the hours coming back over here.
Yeah.
I think it's Reed, I think it's Reed Street. They call that Reed Street.
I have one question. How many people do you notify about blasting?
We were told in the beginning, all we got to do is call the fire chief. That's protocol. Because you got to get a permit to blast. Call the fire chief and that's it. So first, when we first started, we had some complaints because the only one to do was the fire chief. And he just gave us the permit. Everybody blasted, people would call up and say, what's that noise? What's going on? Oh, they're blasting at the quarry. So then we were told by the police chief and the fire chief. When the fire chief gets called, they'll call the police chief. The people that had concerns were supposed to get called by the fire chief or the police chief. Because we said, we'll call everybody and let them know we're going to blast. And they said, no, it's too confusing, we'll handle it. So we called the fire chief and said, in motion, the phone calls for the blast. So it was taken care of as much as we could.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to assume there's ten or less phone calls made to people who have raised concerns. I don't think it's more than that. Maybe five, but I'm not sure. As Mr. Shay said, I just remember in the beginning, we just addressed who's calling. Let's make sure they get called. Let's get everybody a heads up who has raised an issue with calling it and wondering what the noise was.
So would you be willing to have your own call list then? So you'd call the fire department and then call a couple of people that have asked you to call them specifically?
You know what, that's very easy to do, Rich. You could put a robo-call.
Yeah.
And send it out.
I mean, it would take care of a lot of problems.
We used to run the same kind of operation in Holyoke. And half the town of Holyoke would call the Holyoke Police Department. They didn't know anything about it. The only one to do was the Holyoke Fire Chief because he gave us the permit. But we would blast up there a hundred times bigger than what we blasted Lord. And it was just, it would create a lot of havoc. So they started robo-calling out there, you know. It was only once a month, so it's a strange occurrence, you know? You're not, you're not used to it.
How often do you guys blast?
Up here, probably once a month, once every three weeks. Half the size of what we used to blast, you know, just.
I think if you'd be willing to have your own call list, the people we get on, I think that would take care of it. And then you call, you know, you call the fire chief anyway, but then you call.
This all goes back ten years when we first started blasting. More than that. And then we never heard another thing about it because we just assumed the police chief and fire chief were taking care of it.
Thinking, thinking once they notify the fire chief, they've met their requirement.
Well, no, but I'm just.
And the fire chief should be making notifications.
Yeah, but if they call the fire chief and then there's a fire and then there's something else and now, you know, eight hours later, he's like, oh, I didn't make those calls and, you know.
How, how, how soon do you notify the fire chief before you actually blast?
For the twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours.
So twenty-four hours prior to you blasting?
Yeah, if the people say they got notified later on, it might have been a snafu with the police chief and the fire chief. Like I said, something came up.
Well, you could do a robo-call shortly after notifying the fire chief.
Yes, exactly.
And that would take care of the ten as well.
I can think of three people, the Shields' house, the Roy's, and there was one person that lived on.
Lyman Barnes.
Lyman Barnes in Brimfield. And they were the three people that, as far as I know, he had on his list because they were the only ones called and complained. And the one in Brimfield was complaining just so she could complain, you know. But they were, it was protocol and it was, after that, we never seemed to have an issue on site with it. Nobody came up and so they didn't call us.
I agree with that. A quick robo-call would solve the problem.
Yeah.
They could actually use town alert for that too.
Use what?
Town alert.
Yeah, that's what I.
Because they could have.
It's a town alert.
They could have a warrant query blasting notification, for example. If people wants to know, they click on it. One of you guys has to be responsible to, you know, send that notification and then that's it. Everybody's covered.
So you just put out a.
So you just put out a sentence into the app, and who's ever signed up for it will get it. So you don't even have to keep track of...
Like I said, we were willing to do it. We were all set up. And the fire chief or the police chief said, "No, no, we wanna make sure it gets done. You just call the fire chief, we'll handle it."
Who does that call? Who is in charge of, "Okay, I wanna make, tell the chief that I'm gonna, we're gonna do blasting?"
The guy that wouldn't be the daily operator for, because he's, he's getting a blaster scheduled and lined up, and he knows when it's gonna happen.
To help you guys out, if you wanna do it, have him contact me, and I'll have him set up with Town Alert and do that with you.
Yeah.
And that way, we help you. It's free, you know, you don't have to pay for it, no?
What was that? I'm sorry. I think it's getting a little off-topic over there. I think, again, if they do a, you guys have a volunteer. If you wanted to give them your number and be put on a call list, that's up to the residents. If they wanna do that, some residents might not wanna give you the phone number, and they would rather be notified by the chief. But I think the established policy is notify the chief, the chief makes the calls. And then we have one person that we hold accountable. If nobody gets the call, it's the chief's fault. So...
Whatever you'd like us to do.
You know, because I think we're going way too many directions here and doing all kinds of things here. Let's keep it simple, you know?
I like that.
That's good. Becky, do you have a question?
Rebecca Sarah, 20-year employee at the Town of Warren. I worked many years in building and planning with David and Janet and John Callahan. I think they are an example of what this town needs for business owners, so I would certainly encourage the planning board to find in their favor. I thought I had misunderstood because of the air conditioner, and forgive me, Mr. Chairman, but I thought you said under 3.25.1, which is industrial warehouse storage. And again, I don't think that's the correct application of the bylaw, and I think you're putting the property owners under undue onus. So unless there's some other...
This is a gravel bed?
Correct. But it's posted as industrial warehouse storage and facility. So unless, unless the zoning enforcement officer has a different copy of the bylaws, that maybe the website needs to be updated, I, I think they are, again, under the wrong bylaw. Site plan review under Section 5, and Section 8 for earth removal. 3.25.1 warehouse and storage facility. And then, under 3.25 industrial, that puts extra burden on the applicant for no reason. Thank you. But if there's been a change, Mr. Chairman, in the zoning, maybe the website needs to be updated?
So do you want him to refile, then, under a new...
No, I'm not asking him to do anything, but I...
Because you brought this up now, so now, you opened up a can of worms.
Oh, you guys opened the can of worms.
I think you're, the building inspector needs to do her job.
Who created the post? Joe?
There's a letter here that was sent out to the planning board for approval. Before I closed...
Who references it before? Who references it?
Then I sent it out to the planning board for approval before I closed. I don't know.
I know, but... Who came up with 3.25?
There's a letter right here from BJ.
That's BJ.
And it was emailed to you.
From BJ?
Yep. For you to review and see if you agree, and there's been back and forth.
Can I ask if the word, the agenda was the same as the notifications that were...
So it wasn't properly posted?
It's up to you to tell.
It wasn't properly posted? Nope. Thank you very much for bringing that up to our attention.
You're welcome. I mean, it's just that if, I don't wanna see this a continuing thing, you know?
Nope, be the doing.
No, I'm sure.
Yep.
And, and again, it's, it's nothing against the Callahans. I've worked with them for years, and Janet, I'm in West Brookfield now, and they are the best family to work with in a highly reputable company, and any town would be happy to have them.
No, they are great people.
I think that's an undue onus, like I said.
Mr. David Callahan is an amazing person in our community, and...
But I would also suggest that perhaps the zoning enforcement officer take a look at the bylaws once in a while.
As well as board.
Thank you.
It's not properly notified. Great. Yes, ma'am?
Just one more thing.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I can't call up on your, not my meeting, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. I would ask that, if, not to impede on the Callahan's progress on this, they should not be delayed any further. They've gone through the paperwork, they did their thing. They should not be delayed. Just make an administrative change.
Can we do that?
Pardon?
It's not properly posted. You can't, it wasn't properly posted.
But you're not gonna close the hearing tonight anyway, Mr. Chairman.
No, but it has to be reposted.
So repost it tomorrow morning for your next meeting. Where it's, you know it's gonna be continued. I'm sure there's questions.
So at this point, we would have to stop the meeting, not hear anything further, repost it, and come back. And technically, technically, if we move forward and it's challenged...
Yeah, that's the problem.
If it's challenged, then we got a problem. So, Mr. Callahan, the meeting wasn't properly posted, which just got pointed out to us. The wrong section of the bylaw was identified in the posting, and it was identified as industrial and warehouse storage, not earth removal in the bylaw.
I think, I think 8.4 is the special permit for earth removal. I think what was supposed to have been in there was site plan instead of the industrial section, so...
Well, it would have been 3.25.2, probably. Industrial manufacturing or industrial use? It should have been 3.28.
Yep.
Oh, sorry, yep. Instead of 3.25. Yep, yep.
I, I don't see anything wrong with your project. It's not your fault. It's our fault. And I apologize for that. I don't, I don't think your project will not pass at the end, obviously. It's just that we can't follow it.
You can't make sure.
Thank you for stopping.
It was improperly posted. We have to repost it, and then we can move forward with the hearing again. So what would be those dates?
What's our next week?
You need to, you need to advertise it again, right?
Can we ask for a continuance of this meeting and provide a new posting to correct the issue so that the meeting is just continued to the next week?
But we still have to...
Yes, I understand.
Do notification and everything, and meet those requirements, and it depends on when Jill can get everything out and get that done. Because, and a better notification has to be done again.
So if we're gonna continue it, then we just have to pick a date firing up out till a lot to have enough time to advertise it and send the, sending out the notifications out.
Two weeks.
So how long do you need?
We're gonna need at least two weeks.
14, 15? Plenty of time. Like, if you could do something this week, right? Sooner the better.
You guys can do it without?
Yeah.
Yeah? Kids. As long as we have four, we need to have the majority.
Is everybody okay with the 14? Because I'm out, so you guys need to...
What do you have to be here?
And when are you returning, Derek?
28, 22nd.
The 22nd is what it is.
It's a few days. I was gonna say, from what, from the first to the 22nd?
Can you wait until the 28th of August? Because Derek is gonna be out on the 14th. So that means that there's only four out of the five.
We would be happy to wait, if that's easier for you. And we'd be happy to wait until the 28th.
It just covers you from, if one of the other fellows here can't make it, you're doomed, so...
If one of us gets hit by a bus, it doesn't mess up your permit. You can still move forward with four, but with one person out, we're already short ourselves in a... It's a little risky sometimes. We would be happy to wait until the 28th of August.
Becky, do you have a question?
Yes, I would also respectfully ask that your office send a memo to the town clerk so Mr. Callahan and his company does not have to pay for reposting charges, seeing that it was an error on the town's part.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, we, we picked that up. We're not gonna charge it for that.
Yeah, we can't. It was an error on our part.
Yeah, they did their, their thing at the beginning and...
Thank you.
And deal with it now.
So we stop here, we're gonna repost it, and start fresh on the 28th of August.
Yeah, we repost, and then respectfully requesting continuance to the 28th of August.
Okay.
Do a motion to continue.
Are we ready for a motion?
No.
There's nothing we can do.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure. We, we can do a motion, right? Jimmy?
Yes. All right, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on special permit number 310 and site plan approval number 68 for Cal Rolling Hills LLC to August 28th, 2023.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Hold your favor.
But we'll...
You have your free eye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richard Hager, aye.
I'm sorry, did you say it wrong?
7, 7:50.
7:50, yeah.
7:50.
And off the record, Tracy, I would love to talk to you about, maybe about saving the drones.
Thank you. It was just so many unintentional...
You should see all my videos when I stopped the car to get, because I have a camera in my car, so I stopped in the middle of the road and get the turtle and move it. I just do it all the time. I love drones.
Right.
Ed, would you read us the numbers, please?
Continue public hearing on special permit number 309 and site plan number 69 for Samick Properties LLC under Section 3.23.15 of the Town of Warren zoning bylaws. The applicant is seeking special permit to allow for 60-by-120-foot steel building with overhang to house and maintain necessary equipment for operation of sand and gravel pit located 275 Brimfield Road, Warren. This parcel is also known as Assessors Map 30 Lot 4, which is in the rural district.
Right. So this is for a big 60-by-120-feet building, right?
Yeah. Would the board prefer that stand or stay seated, or would you prefer...
Say that again?
Would you prefer that stand, stay seated, or would you prefer here?
Just have your name, because the zoom will take you up. You can stand, you can sit down.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Thank you. So my name is Damian Bertram. I'm here on behalf of Samick Properties LLC, property owner. John Frederick is here as well as the engineer that has prepared the site plan. We did just pass in an updated site plan shortly before the meeting. This was just completed, but it identifies some additional dimensions that we think will be helpful for the board in considering this application. So we do have before the board a, two things, as the notice indicated. The first being a special permit for the operation of a business under the Section 3.23.15, so a contracting business. This is allowed by special permit under the bylaw. And what my client is proposing is to construct, as, as the chair said, a 60-by-120-foot commercial building to house his contracting business on the site. As you will see from looking at the plan, the building is set back more than two, about 210 feet from the road, 230 feet from the southerly boundary, 125 feet from the northerly boundary. And I can wait until the plans are out and you can take a look at them before I continue. I'm sorry.
Trying to catch up.
I'll, I'll give everybody a moment. You can let me know when you're ready.
Yeah, that's the updated one we just talked about. You're looking at the, probably the one that came in this thing. So this is the water district. They don't want anybody in.
So this is the old one? This one is no good anymore?
Yeah, so that was really a septic design that showed the location of the building and what was intended to be a proposed septic system. What we provided the board with this evening has more detail in terms of the overall site. And we think that's more helpful to the board.
This is rotated, I think, with...
It, it is likely a different orientation, yes.
Okay.
In, in preparing for tonight's meeting and evaluating, trying to anticipate some of the questions that the board might have, we re-enlisted Mr. Frederick to provide a little bit more detail in terms of the site boundaries, in terms of the parking, in terms of the building location relative to the boundaries and so on, which is, I think... the building location relative to the boundaries and so on, which is, I think, more than what was on the septic design that was previously provided.
Is the entrance changing?
No.
So the entrance here is the current entrance?
The entrance is the current entrance.
Yes.
There's a small paved apron at the entrance, the balance of the access driveway will be simply gravel.
All right, have you addressed, so the Warren, the West Warren Water District and the Warren Water District, both, they concur, on a liner? If you were gonna store oil or other liquids?
And I don't believe there's any proposed storage of oil or liquid.
That was if I was within the four hundred feet of the wells, which I'm not. West Warren has approved everything, that's why I got the easement on there. Don't work it if I'm parking or building within the four hundred feet of the well, they want a liner, nowhere near the well. The property line is four hundred and five feet from the well, and I'm a hundred and twenty five, I think a hundred and twenty five feet with the building from the property line.
Yeah.
So I'm well, way past the criteria of what West Warren wants.
So did you run this by West Warren or you're just talking even this way?
West Warren signed off the easement and everything.
Okay.
Sewer? So you're putting in sewer, water, electricity?
Again, part of the reason for the septic design being sort of updated, it's municipal water and sewer, so there's no more need for the septic time.
Does the grade from the wells generally run away from the wells here?
Yes.
Does?
Yes.
So even if something spilled?
Yep, no matter what.
You know, outside the building, it's not going toward the well?
Nope.
Okay.
We also noted on our plan, and I can show you, what we do, there's a watershed protection overlay district, that's noted on the plan.
Yeah.
And everything is outside of there.
Yeah, so...
Quick question. You get the proposed building, but then you also have proposed truck parking, equipment storage off the side by the proposed material storage area. What's the building gonna be used for?
Maintenance, parking, and taking care of putting the equipment in.
Okay, so it's not to store your equipment? Or is it?
I'm not sure what you mean. The equipment's gonna be in there with maintenance, we're gonna have to store it in there, but there's also gonna be equipment parked outside too. If we didn't put it on there, it would be asked for or whatever, that's where the equipment, basically, that's equipment area.
Yeah, it just, I'm looking at the building, it just says proposed building, but then you also have a separate area of proposed parking for your equipment.
That's like...
So my understanding was it was for the equipment that the building was there to store the equipment?
But the screener, we're gonna put the screener in the garage every day, it's a contracted business. So, I mean, everything's not gonna go in the garage every night.
Where's the active area for the gravel pit right now?
It's up to the north, I believe.
The active area for the gravel is to the south of the material storage area.
Will we have any questions?
Well, we received opposition to this project too. So, we gotta address that. And we, and there's a whole packet over there, and then we received letters on this project.
A similar package? Was it said to be a, would be a building?
And we received an email with re attachments.
Is there a file, copies over there?
Is there one? Yeah, I just passed up the ones I had over there.
I just wanna be clear, are we talking about the building that they're asking us to approve?
Read through it.
I would see the package there.
It's ready, but something needs to be...
For that, yeah.
I just wanna find out if it's about the building that we're trying to approve for the operations on this site.
The ones I mailed today.
Well, this is, this is from Ms. Charlene Ferris. And Ms. Ferris is in the audience. It's up to you to...
Maybe you could explain as...
Okay, the maps that I sent earlier cover the groundwater protection district. It's a lot larger, if you have the map there, I sent copies. On two, it's map two, it shows the grid. That is the entire groundwater protection area. It's a zone one. It's bordered by Warren Water District and West Warren Water District. There's aquifers and fresh running streams back there, on the backside.
So this is regarding the operations or where the building, the new building is gonna be?
Both.
Both?
Both.
So they are, our agendas for the building?
Yep, but...
They already run a pit over there, that's what I'm understanding, right? We gave you a permit some time ago.
But what I'm trying to let the board know is there's wetlands back there. There's also that protection area that the building cannot be put into.
Okay, can you show us where that area is in compared to the plan that they have?
It's on the... June, June. This is where I am.
Where does the disc come from?
That's on our zoning maps. If you go to layers, you'll find that.
Is it this circle, this circle?
Yeah, there's two, yeah, I think that's probably on the assessors map.
Yeah, I can see there, but it's such a...
It's dark over there.
The scale is so, you need to zoom in and try to wind up, yes.
Rich Demetrius currently conservation commission, I do know where this building is being placed, and it is not in the wetland areas.
By representing conservation or you representing Rich Demetrius?
I'm representing Rich Demetrius, but I'm just, as far as the wetland goes, there is no wetlands anywhere near where this project is. And also, as far as the wellhead zone goes, two other projects right down the street, one being the Highway Barn are in the same district. And the Highway Barn is currently, has been asked by the conservation commission several times with the previous highway boss and this highway boss to clean out the salt. There's a salt basin there that was supposed to be cleaned every so many years and it has not been cleaned, and that's a bigger problem with the wellhead district right there.
Has conservation sent the letter?
Conservation's talked to the previous highway boss and to this highway boss. To my knowledge, it hasn't been taken care of yet.
They sent them a letter?
Can you click the zoning map?
We went on site.
Click on the zoning map. The bottom one, neighborhood zoning, that's what I'll bring up.
Yeah, that's just gonna put it in a row like...
Through the chair, we do have the groundwater protection overlay line identified on our plan, and I think pretty clearly the building is outside of that area.
Well, I mean, so you got wetlands way down in the corner here, but that seems to be...
Do you know what layer this is?
If you check on your overlay districts or the plus sign is the overlay districts, I think it has an overlay.
Oh. No, those are zoning overlays, Major and Mill are something that was...
What about the plus sign next to zoning?
So, yeah, that's...
The other choice is if you look at the Warren zoning map, it does have the overlay districts in it, and it has the parcels on the zoning map as well.
Yeah, but I think we're trying, I mean, we know what zone it is for...
But the overlay districts are on the zoning map as well.
Even those?
You know their four, their site?
Yes.
Okay, so what I, from what I can see here, and on the latest map, this is, the building is outside, the blue. The location of the proposed building.
Because you asked about these two little bump outs, right?
Yes.
Those two little bump outs.
Because one is this one, this four hundred feet circle.
I have a better map here.
Sure.
And they're proposing the building here.
This one houses? Yeah.
So where they, right here?
Yeah.
This way here.
Try Google Earth and measure.
Respectfully, we have an engineer that's done better than Google Earth.
So, we're just doing our due diligence?
No, I understand, but...
It's a hundred and twenty feet from that four hundred foot circle.
That's right.
And it's two hundred and ten feet from the road.
Right. It seems to be well outside of that area of concern.
Come on, you're gonna wifi it. So if we can show that in here, we zoom in and we can zoom in. What is too close, what you say is too close to me, that circle is not wetlands, it's just a...
There's aquifers that run back there.
Yes, but that circle is an, it's a, it's what the water department gave us that you can't get in. That's what I understand. And they are a hundred and twenty feet from outside that circle. There we go. Just zoom in.
I'm trying.
Okay. Sorry.
There.
There.
Zoom, can you zoom in more?
I don't see it.
But, they don't let you?
This is it, right here. So it's this sort of Z shape, right?
Correct.
I would say, where was it? That's the Z shape.
Right.
So, this district goes along the border of the four hundred...
The building is shown here, a hundred and twenty feet from this circle and two hundred and ten feet from the road.
So that, that light blue hatched area, which is the groundwater protection district, is the line that shows?
Yeah, the building is clearly outside that protection site. I don't have any problems with that, I'm just trying to understand the complaint of being too close to that, when that's the setback.
I don't, actually, there is no setback from the zone.
Correct, that's just...
We're well outside of the zone.
That is, that is a no zone for you.
Right. You could be five feet from it. And that doesn't, right, and that doesn't work.
I understand that. So where did you get this one?
It says right down there where it's from, map.
But it's too far away, we can't see it.
Mass map.
Mass mappers? You should try that one. Mass mappers, aquifers, by... Yes, please.
Rebecca Sarah again. If, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Berthium and Mr. Samick, didn't the water district...
Excuse me, hold on.
Through the chairman, can you verify, Mr. Chairman, with the Mr. Samick and Mr. Attorney Berthium, that they received an easement from the water district, so I would think if it was an issue, they want to approve that.
Yes, we did.
They have an easement for the electricity and the plumbing.
Yeah, also, the West Warren Water Department was here, I think, second meeting? Said they didn't have a problem with it? It's been going on a long time.
I also think respectfully, we do have this line shown on our plan that we provided, and I think that very clearly we are well outside of the area of concern, well outside the groundwater protection.
This is a no brainer, I'm just trying to be...
No, I understand, but respectfully, we have more detailed plans provided than than plans that might be pulled off the internet, I guess.
I know, we're just trying to work on this. So the green is the water area.
This is a no construction zone, given to you by the water department.
And that's not part of our property?
And your building is here, a hundred and ten feet from this line and two hundred and ten feet from the road.
And their easement goes right like here somewhere? That's what their easement is for, or to go down the road, right?
That's your easement, so you can get your electric, your water in your sewer.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, that shows on your plan.
Right.
Yep. Do you have any, anything to...
I have concerns of having maintenance in there with fluids and hazardous materials, toxic materials.
So there will be floor drains in the building, but those go through a lot of separated before it goes into the sewer and then treated.
I saw that in one of the old plans.
And that's on the wall.
Yeah, which is allowed for floor drains to go into public sewer.
I mean, to me, this permit, this permit is a no brainer, it's very easy. You're gonna have more problems with the building inspector trying to get all those details done. The planning board is just approving that, where are you gonna put the building and what is it for? That's our task. Board, you guys have anything? Do you have any questions, you know, about the building, about the use of the building, about where it's gonna go?
Actually, it seems fairly straightforward based upon the plans and information. I would just suggest that I started to make this presentation while the plans were coming out. I do think that we've met all the criteria for the special permit for construction business in this site, area in this location. As the gentleman in the back pointed out, we do have similarly situated uses directly to the north of this site, in both Fountain and Suns Building and business and the Highway Barn directly to the north. So this seems to be appropriately located, it seems that the use is compatible with other uses in the area. In terms of the question as to the appropriateness of the business on this site, the board has already recently found that an earth removal operation is appropriate here. Those criteria, those characteristics in terms of traffic in and out would be similar to the business that Mr. Samick proposed. the business that Mr. Samick proposes to operate from here. This is almost, I would suggest, an extension of that earth removal business. So it seems certainly appropriate to allow for the construction of this building in this location. It seems that we've addressed appropriately adequate setbacks from surrounding properties. There's really no proposal to change any grade here in where the building is located. And finally, this seems consistent with the bylaw generally in terms of just preserving public safety, convenience and harmony within the neighborhood. So this is a fourteen acre site, we're proposing a seventy-two hundred square foot building that is set back, I think, adequately across the board. So we would respectfully request that the board grant both the special permit and the site plan approval.
Thank you, sir. Charlene, literally, they can put ten feet from that circle. I know your concern about contamination going through.
Actually, the letter from the Warren Water District says, "No storage of vehicles, gas, oil or other chemicals within Zone One, four hundred feet of the wells without a liner." So that's even inside that circle. The circle is four fifty. The circle is four fifty.
So a liner will have to be installed, correct?
No. They're saying that you can go within four hundred feet of the well. That would be within this circle. That's what they, that's what their letter says. Right. So you're well outside, you've got your four fifty plus one twenty or one ten depending what the structure is. So you don't need the liner. It would really be if they were doing work or storing things like in here somewhere.
Yes, sir. Just maybe if Clint Charlene's fears are risked, and I would think she'd know this beyond the board of health and Mr. Frederick could probably back me up on this. When we decepting systems, we have affluent and we have to have full with separation, we have sand. Sand filters it into the groundwater system. This is a giant sand pit, so if there ever was some kind of a spill, we have a tremendous amount of filtering that could take place before it ever got to the well and it would be cleaned up. So I don't think that, I mean, I know everybody's concerned about chemicals, but I mean, he's not doing a nuclear power plant here, he just has, you know, gas and oil.
Thank you, Rich. I am a big fan of trying to conserve the land and nature and everything. Honestly, I see no potential danger here. Literally is a hundred and sixty feet away from what you're supposed to be. If the radius is four hundred according to the water department.
Right.
You're showing a four fifty radius outside. And the building is about two hundred and ten feet from the road. So it's about the same as our highway department farm and what the other building is over there, that big steel building, just to contain it. I will be the first one to, you know, raise a flag, I'm afraid it's gonna get contaminated, but I don't feel that fear right now. Do you have more fear, do you have more?
I do, because there's wetlands to be considered, there's aquifers and flood running streams back there.
You know, eventually we will end up having it everywhere. But, you know, construction has...
Oh, if you're not concerned about West Warren's water, I guess I shouldn't be either.
No, I'm not saying we're not concerned, I'm saying that here they are doing everything by the book. You know, the water department told them, no, we don't want you here, that's that circle, they are staying outside that circle. From a planning board point of view, is, okay, now they're gonna have a building for storage for fixing their equipment, for all that, that be used. And if we look at the location, it's far away from the road, it's gonna look like the other buildings around the road. It's where it's supposed to be. Tell me, what else can we do? Does anybody on the room have any other objection about it? I mean, the client is doing everything by the book. He's not asking for a special permit to finish that circle. Building is far away.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's fine.
Fair enough. My Spanish sometimes kicks in the back, but I'm... What I'm trying to do here is just, you know, this is a very simple application. To me, there's nothing, you're not asking for something. Yes, please.
So Mrs. Ferris, we looked at it, it's outside of the water district, what's laid out. Because of that, we have no, they have no restriction on where they can do this, okay? As far as, they're doing everything by the book and, you know, we will, if there's anything that's out of order, we'll address it. They're just not within that zone. And they've done everything else. As far as the bylaws, they meet the bylaws. That's the only thing we can enforce. We can't enforce ifs, what ifs, maybe. We have to enforce what's in the bylaws. And if there is a true threat, and there is no threat to the water at this point because they're outside of that zone. You know, it's just like, same thing as the road going past the, you know, past there. At any point, a car can break down and leak antifreeze and things can happen. You know, you're outside that zone. You know, things happen in life. You're gonna do the best you can to make sure you don't spill anything, cause you know people are gonna be watching.
We're here for three generations, I got my kids and my grandkids there, I mean, we're here for the long haul. I mean, we're doing everything right.
Everything's in order, as far as I see, unless there's somebody else that brings something new from our position.
Anybody on Zoom?
Forgot about Zoom.
Anybody on Zoom have a comment?
I would like to know about the hazardous material, toxic materials that will be stored in that building. I believe that's supposed to be listed on the application, what will be stored in that building.
That's come to the board. The element that's gonna be in there is oil, antifreeze, windshield washer fluid. Basically whatever it takes to maintain the vehicle, there's no hazardous waste, there's no...
Everything you just identified is hazardous waste.
Okay, but, I mean...
What quantities are you gonna be storing?
Fifty-five gallon drums of motor oil, probably one at a time, two at a time. But we use that to change oils, that's like three motor oil changes. Fifty-five gallon drum of windshield washer fluid. It's all, they're all gonna be in those containers where it's spec for, what do they call, fifty percent of the leaks, it catches it. They're all, it's all safe to be, I mean, it's just, there's nothing major. I mean, anything like we're storing...
It's not, it's not a storage site, this is for the maintenance and operation. We have identified the groundwater separator on the plan, which Mr. Frederick previously mentioned and identified how that would work. So, again, this isn't a storage facility.
And I'm sure the building commission is gonna enforce to do that right, you know, to make it work.
Right. So oil-water separator, do you have an operating and a maintenance schedule for that? Cause you're gonna maintain them.
Yep, well, that's gonna be when the plumber installs it, he'll tell them, yeah, everything's set the way it's gotta be. That's what Mr. Govey just did the design for it.
So is that catching stuff from inside the building? What is it catching, I guess?
It's the floor drains in the building.
It's the floor drain, okay, so if you spill something, it's gonna go through that. And then you just gotta maintain that.
Good. And that can certainly be a condition of the approval.
Yeah, cause it's an oil-water separator, we're gonna have to put that as a condition.
Certainly.
And making sure that we get an operating and scheduled for that maintenance and making sure you're properly doing that.
Get it bumped out and taken care of right away.
Yeah, we just wanna copy that. That's what manufactured, you know, the operations of it.
Yep, that's not a problem.
Yeah, you kinda worry about drains and shop floors and...
Understandable.
Those things are maintenance, and I know sometimes people get busy and they forget or financial things, because they can become expensive to maintain. We just gotta make sure that you do maintain it. And we have to put that in the conditions, you know, for the building commissioner to enforce.
Yep. It's typical.
And because you're storing large amounts of chemicals, you're gonna have the fire chief inspect that. You're gonna have that too. Fifty-five gallon drums of motor oil or antifreeze, things like that. You're hitting that threshold.
Well, I know the town warrants you a lot more than I'm gonna have there, so, but no, whatever it takes, you know, they wanna come to vet it, I'm doing it the right way so I can not hide it.
Good with this, I have no more questions. We're just gonna make sure that we do the conditions that are appropriate.
Okay, so we have to close and then we have to vote. We wanna do the usual, we can close it now and work on potential conditions and then vote on it.
As we have this casual...
So we would have to wait until he's back to be safe.
Yep. Worked with it.
How much time do we have? Now, but then we only have fourteen days.
Yeah.
Do you follow your intention?
I do, we're just under some time constraints with the delivery of this building.
And ahead of yourselves over there, you?
Well, I think this has been going on for a bit, right? So I, you know, only so long, only so long you can hold off the building for it.
But this guy deserved the vacation.
We all do, we all do. We're just trying to understand the board's procedure, ordinarily, you would close, ordinarily, you would close and vote and then draft the decision with the conditions, right?
Yes.
So is there a reason why we...
No. No, no, we would close, then we would work on some conditions and stuff and then vote.
Then meeting workshop.
Yeah. We have a workshop.
Okay.
Cause the problem is the fourteen days. Once we vote, we have fourteen days.
Issue the decision.
To issue the decision, including any of her time, to like get it through proper channels.
Okay.
It would be better if it was flipped. We had fourteen days before we voted, then we have like ninety days to work on it, so it's not that bad. The other thing...
You could vote when we meet in the...
Well, once we close, we can't take on any more information or even like...
Right, we just can discuss it.
So, did you ask?
We could, we could put it on the agenda for the fourteenth. Our next meeting's the fourteenth.
Mm-hmm.
And then, we could discuss it and we could vote.
The process is already done, once we close it, we've already received everything.
Yeah.
Whether you're here or not, it doesn't really matter at that point, you know? And Jill's probably gonna email out, you know, drafts. And being a dedicated municipal employee, you're gonna review those drafts while you're on vacation.
Yes, sir. Every night when I get the wifi.
See, we're putting him to work on his vacation.
We all do it.
Okay, so we could, we could list it as discussion and possible vote on the fourteenth. Does that mean we have to vote if we're still hashing it out? But if we decide, we can do it.
We could always just sit that way, yeah.
I didn't enjoy you.
You could?
Yeah.
You could?
Probably won't, but...
What is on, cause we have four?
Yeah, no, I trust you guys, I don't think this is a problem for you. I'm just, he said they're running out of time, so I'm trying to...
Right.
Yeah.
We should agree with that. Okay. That sounds like the plan to close and vote.
All right, so motion to close the public hearing for special permit number three oh nine and site plan number sixty-eight for Samick Properties LLC.
Site plan number sixty-nine, not sixty-eight.
Sorry, sixty-nine.
Just make sure...
Treeters on.
That we deliver.
Yeah.
No technicalities.
Right. Sixty-nine.
You have Becky watching us over there. Slap us right back in water.
Do you have a second?
I need a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longgan, aye.
David Dufry, aye.
Derek Bailey, aye.
Rich Ihawker, aye.
Motion passed. Thank you.
These are all your copies, right? What about ours?
Okay.
I don't want, I have two of those.
Can't have too many good clients.
So next, we have a discussion.
Did you write down the potential...
Angelica's Energy Special Permit Expiration and Building Permit. You good on number seven?
Number seven.
We start at number seven.
Yeah, okay. Building Commissioner, please.
So, I guess the concern was, did the special permit expire? Because of lack of work that was being done? Or was it just a continuation of work and did it continue by default? I know we all took a vote a couple months ago and voted that it was expired based on peer reviews, that no work was progressing forward. And then after that, after that vote, the building commissioner issued a building permit for them to move forward. And that was after we've already determined that the permit has expired. So we're kinda stuck in a situation now. You know, we, we already said no to the permit at that point because of progress. You know, does that nullify the building permit? Or should a building permit have been issued even though we've already said there's no special permit anymore? The requirement for this project is to have a special permit.
But didn't you run this question by legal? Yep. Yep. I think their opinion was that it was not a reason to deny a continuation.
Didn't ask for a continuation.
Well, I mean, you know, to deny the special permit extension for the building, well, I don't know.
There was no extension.
On the building permit.
It just, special permit ran out, you know?
I can pull that out.
I have it right here. If you want, I can read it.
Yes, please.
Yep. Based on the information you provided, the applicant appears to have commenced substantial use of the special permit and therefore the special permit has not lapsed. Under section five point one, three of the Warren zoning bylaw or an MGL forty A, section nine, special permits last after two years if substantial use thereof has not commenced except for good cause. Substantial use varies based upon the project, the use authorized by a special permit. The issuance of a building permit for work under a special permit is not determinative when establishing whether construction has commenced or for purposes of avoiding lapse. If work on detention basins authorized by the special permit and shown on the approved plans is mostly complete, the applicant likely has a good case that substantial use has commenced. While such work does not require a building permit, it would precede work requiring a building permit, solar panel installation. In the normal progression of the project, it was also unletly that the applicant would have installed the detention basins as required by the special permit and approved plans for something other than the special, other than the solar project authorized by the special permit. Even if the work at the site did not qualify as a substantial use of the special permit, lapse may be avoided for good cause. This is a determination for the building inspector in their role as enforcing the zoning bylaw. Any number of factors may contribute to good cause, pursuit of other related permits, delays outside the applicant's control, et cetera. I suggest these issues be brought to the attention of the building inspector for determination as to whether the applicant has commenced substantial use on the project for purposes of avoiding lapse or if the applicant should be required to show good cause to avoid lapse. Brian Falk. That was his opinion.
Okay.
And that was May twenty-fourth.
So where do we stand?
I'm just afraid that as a planning board, we gave a special permit termination. Is there any? And then with all the respect of the building commissioner, which I respect a lot, she gave a continuation of the building permit. Where does that leave us? Can, can, can we do that? Can we, can that happen and, you know, go back to the building, especially to the special permit? Or where, I see we're limbo.
That opinion says that the special permit never lapsed. There was no expiration, essentially.
It's been enforced, there's been substantial use of the property under the special permit, therefore it hasn't lapsed.
So then the planning board is wrong and now we just follow the building commissioner and just let the project keep going?
And basically what Brian said was, yes, our initial interpretation that it expired was wrong.
So it continues that.
It continues, yeah. It did not expire.
The building permit allows them now to put the solar panels on. So up until now, they didn't need the building permit, now they have the building permit, they can do the panels. And working out the other, like, electrical infrastructure and stuff.
Right.
Vijay, did you raise your hand? No?
Okay.
Do you wanna add something to it that, I just wanna?
You know, I'm prepared. I, I firmly stand by town council or your opinion from the attorney. And I reviewed it and also have the case laws because I've been up against this before. And in their defense, they also provided case law which states that permit doesn't lapse if there is substantial work being done or used. I have some of the timelines that I have. I have several emails from Joyce saying how basins were being repaired or, and please, don't quote me because I am not a conservation person. I don't know all the terminology and I'm not gonna pretend like I do, but obviously there was a statement made too that there was two years and nothing's happened. That's not in the two years I've been here. And, you know, from the first day that we met on site, conservation planning, which was April of twenty-one, to the date now, there's been continuous things going on. And as I mentioned in the first meeting that I came here about this issue with all of you, that you can go on to Google Earth and see the substantial work that has been done on this twenty-six plus acres. Not only to mention the surety bond has, bond has been paid, the five thousand for engineering review has been paid, the sign has gone up that was requested. This company, in my eyes, and everything that I've reviewed and researched, has done everything the town has asked for from the start and continues to do that. And I, again, as the statement was given from Brian about substantial use, that it falls to your building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer to make the decision. And that's what you hired me for and that's what I did. I saw that substantially, they have done, they've spent over eight million dollars on that site to date. And like I said, they've paid all of the, all of the steps that are in the decision that was, that is part of, that was issued from the planning board. The first one, which was, well, they paid the three, on three twenty-eight, twenty-three, they paid the deposit of five thousand for the engineering services. They have done, they did the pre-construction meeting, I mean, I can go down to this step by step. They've been doing it all along. I've made timeline of the things that I witnessed myself out there. I, I, I don't know what to say. I did my job per the code and regulations that I have been hired to.
Thank you.
So where's the surety bond? Because there was talk about sending it back to Bucita.
Treasurer, it was sent back and then it came back and then this was on the agenda and you halted the conversation.
Okay.
About the commission, they planned, yep, but they still, still wanted, I believe, wanted to talk about.
Yeah, okay.
Because there was a draft of it.
And the peer review account has been maintained?
Yeah.
It was a surplus, right?
And they, they didn't.
It's been so small.
They also put some signs, they clearly marked it now.
Not to park.
Yeah, no parking on the road, no stopping, offloading, they had to pull into the site. So it's clearly marked now. Yeah.
Personally, I, I have, I deal with a lot of building commissioners. I respect them and I sure follow what they do, what they do and say, ask me to do. I don't see, I, I know the board voted that was an end of it for the special permit, but looking at everything and all that we have is we, we can't hold it. And there's nothing for us to hold it, I, unless you have something else, for me it's just, you know, you know.
So my concern is we've already did a vote that it expired.
Is that detrimental?
Well, we, we, we can't just say, well, that's no void now.
Did we actually?
We have to vote.
Did we vote though? I don't remember.
I think we did, I think we just discussed it and said we really need to go to the.
You know, I do remember voting.
I do remember voting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do not.
We have to check because.
That's the only thing.
How do we undo that?
How do we do, undo so they can continue with the project?
Obviously they can continue because they have their building permit.
But based on Brian's email, does it matter?
I don't think it matters.
I don't think it matters.
It doesn't matter because it doesn't expire.
It doesn't.
Could've voted that the sky's yellow, it doesn't matter.
But we thought, or we said, did.
Is that a question of legal, at least, I, I just wanna be safe as a planning board. You know, we, we screw it up, okay, fine, whatever you wanna call it, we're gonna have them continue with the, with the project as building inspector has, you know, approved the building permit? Do we end up in a dark side?
So.
We just rescind our vote.
What if we just do a vote?
To rescind the vote.
To rescind the vote of it expiring.
Okay.
Because it was done in error and.
You have a second?
Clarify the.
Second.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Brooke King, aye.
Ed Longigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Ihacker, aye.
So that has been gone.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're done with that.
They're good. My only other question is, can I address them now?
Yes, please.
On the site, I walked up, you guys, your property line is right up to the access road going up onto Corey Hill. And then on the opposite is the conservation lane.
Yes.
Okay. Just so you're aware, when I hiked up there during the spring with my kids, somebody dumped a significant amount of trash right along your fence line there. And you guys are supposed to be maintaining that property, so if you can get that trash out of there. It, it's a hiking trail.
Sure.
And somebody also dumped a whole bunch of it on conservation land. That's not your worry, but on your land, there's a whole bunch of trash there too, so.
We'll take care of that.
People, because that, that road, people who up there and they dump stuff all the time, you know, it's sad. I try to shoo them away if I see somebody driving up there with a truck full of junk. It's like, hey, you know, we know what you're going to do.
We appreciate that.
Go do it somewhere else. Go take it to the dump, but there is something, if you can take care of it.
Sure.
And good job with the signs, by the way.
Oh, speaking of the signs, what about the, that sign that collapsed? That somebody dropped, that the line between Warren and Westbrookfield? You wanna picture?
Oh, yes.
I'll get you a picture.
You guys still haven't fixed that.
Which sign was this?
I'll, I'll try to bring it.
The town line?
Yeah.
The property line?
Oh, okay.
That somebody, your excavator backed into it and knocked it over. The tracks went right to it and pushed the town line sign that said Westbrookfield and Warren over. And apparently Westbrookfield come and, came and picked up the sign and did something with it, but it was an old, old property line. You guys said you were gonna resolve that, never got resolved.
Yeah, it looks like one more, you know, historical signs with the, says Warren, Westbrookfield, like division, you know, political division. I have a picture, I can find it and send it to you, look at it, but when we, one of our site visits, it was right there on the ground.
Yeah, it was early in the project. And when I, when I first seen it, because I, again, I lived down that road, so I drive past it all the time. When I seen it knocked over, I get up, I look and there were tracked vehicle, tracks going to it. So that hit it, knocked it over and, you know, it's been gone since then.
If you would mind sending us pictures of the wall.
Yeah, I have pictures, we did two site visits, on the first one I have pictures of the sign. And I remember I do have a picture on this sign.
I completely forgot about it. It's been gone for a while now.
Yeah, I, I love those signs, so.
Be nice if that can get put, put back so we know where the property line is.
No problem.
No problem. So my concern, and I think this is another reason why we thought the project basically wasn't going forward, is we've had items on our peer review account since two years ago, July of twenty-one. There was debris that was dumped into the wetlands because of heavy rain. And, and the engineering firm, is it Nick?
Yeah, Love was on it.
Yeah, I mean, they said they were gonna take care of these items and these have been, it's up there.
Every single item on that list has been taken care of.
Okay, this is a current report, though.
We've, we've asked multiple times for copies of those reports and we've received maybe a handful.
Okay.
Can we get, if we could.
So get printed out and give it to them, send it to them.
Yeah.
We'd like them all.
Which, what is the date on that one, Rich?
Six nine twenty-three.
Yeah, we'd, we'd like copies of them all.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a reason why they not hand them? Joe?
I don't know.
I just, I mean, six nine is the last one, we just got it.
Right, no, but all the previous ones.
They sent a bill but didn't send the report.
Right, all the previous ones, if they've requested them.
Yeah, when I get them, I send them.
To?
I believe Nick, I can pull my email.
Nick Fandose?
Fanci.
Yeah.
Fanci Dola, that's the engineer.
So if Nick's getting them and not giving them to you guys.
We're not getting all of them either from.
I, I know we've asked.
From O'Reilly.
I know we've asked OTO.
Ask Nick to see if he's been getting them.
We will do that.
Yeah.
I don't think so, because OTO, they're not send, O'Reilly, you have to say the whole word.
Yeah.
OTO has.
You guys listen actually from OTO, how much do?
Yeah, so OTO would send them to us.
Yes.
And then it would be us sent, so they're not really, I mean, because they're working for us, so.
Could the board give OTO permission to send them directly to us as well?
Do you wanna?
Make everyone's life a little easier.
Have them send the reports directly?
Both of us.
Too well sent them.
Why not?
I mean, if it would help get this stuff done.
Why not? It would tell us what needs to be worked on.
Ashley?
Yes, I'm here.
Can, can you, when you send us the peer review reports, can you also send them to, who do you want to go to?
Yes, we can do that.
And the, the most recent one, which was July eleven, I, I sent that today.
You did, okay.
So we are all caught up.
Okay.
As of our last visit last week.
Can the board?
And I can forward that, I'll forward that directly.
Can the board also give OTO permission to forward all the historical ones? So that we have a record for all the files.
I'm good with that, sure.
Ashley, can you also send the historical ones?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Okay, so as far as you know, lot three and lot four, all these items have been resolved, these old, I mean, this is, you know, eleven of twenty-one, as far back.
Actually, Ashley, has anything changed?
Yeah, can you update?
So as of, from what I understand, as of July eleven, not, no, some of these, these items had not been addressed, but they did, they did talk to our engineer Karen out there and said they would be taking care of it, like, within a month as they were, you know, as they were back on site.
Okay, well, I'll just say that Nick said he was gonna take care of them like a year ago and, you know.
And Nick said he would fix that sign for the property line.
Yeah.
If they went to Nick and he didn't share them with you, then you didn't know to fix this.
Sounds like you guys need to have a talk with Nick.
Please.
So that's the picture of the sign, that it was torn down?
Can anybody see?
Yeah. Squint really hard!
It's that one, yeah, yeah, yeah. Is it still there?
No, it got removed.
Westbrookfield took it?
Don't.
Somebody took it.
Oh, boy.
Somebody took it, it's a heavy, heavy stone pillar thing.
It's in some garage, do you know?
Where?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in somebody's hand right now, right?
Yeah.
That's the area of that, right there. Because we kinda like saw somebody back up into it, knocked it up.
Site visit, four months ago, when there's just none on the ground, that was back up. Sorry, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it, we'll, we'll set some.
Okay.
Ooh.
Nice.
Turn it in.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was the first site visit, I don't find the second site, it goes in the ground.
So Ashley, we're still doing once a month visits right now, right?
Correct.
Um, so what's your plan now? Are you?
Showing the picture of the trash.
Increasing activity, the point, do we need to start having them show up more often or what do you think?
Maybe we'll do whatever you would like us to do, so, I mean, as far as I understand, most of the vegetation is established, I think there's some work that needs to happen on the basins and, um, and well, I mean, at least the vegetation is established, so I, I think, you know, some of the Warren, West End and things like that.
Well, that's for, for somebody ties up.
But there, I know they're gonna stall around and do some work, but I don't think.
We have a little trash, some kind of light.
Don't do too much disturbance, so we certainly can keep an eye on it and if we need more frequent visits, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Or if, yeah, if, if there's anything.
Yeah, it's, it's, you're that conservation, that room. If you're going on a board. It's to the right, correct? If you, if you're going up Cutler Road Extension at Corey Hill, you're going straight, you just keep, you can let.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's wait for David so we can.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
It's not, not our jurisdiction, but it's trash.
No, 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 again, I, yeah, I just wanna make sure, yeah, so it's, it's on the, the north side of the flats.
Okay, so what is the plan?
Okay, what I, what I was saying was, instead of having more frequent visits, you guys get the reports, get caught up on what should've been caught up and then we can determine if we need more frequent visits or if monthly's. If we need more frequent visits or if monthly is sufficient?
Sure.
Okay.
No problem. Anything else?
I don't have anything on this.
Nope.
Since we last talked, nobody's parked in the road, so? There is all of that wrong.
That's good.
So are we good? We? Guys have a green light? Get that done?
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, guys need anything from us? You good?
So?
Okay.
Number eight, discuss rules and regulations for site plan approvals?
That's a big topic.
Yeah, it is, it is. I had started putting these together, but with my? Father and family situation, I never got to finish it. But you sent some stuff around? The other day? From Rentham?
Yeah.
It was good. I looked at probably? At least a dozen towns, maybe two dozen? To see what their? Process was? And it's kind of all over the board, a lot of the ones that are online are the larger communities in the eastern half of the state?
Yep.
And a lot of them deal with?